All right, with that, we'll move on to announcements and presentations where I think Tony might have a couple of those things addressed or at least talked about. The first one is item A. Help San Bruno's Census for 2020 completion rate to 100%. The city is currently at 70.3%. You can submit your census online at my2020census.gov or by calling 1-844-330-2020. Again, that's 1-844-330-2020. And it is important, other cities in the community of our county, even though the county is doing the best in the state, we are still behind in the others. And it is easy, it is quick, it doesn't ask for a lot of personal information, so we really encourage, the council encourages you. It's important for the next 10 years as far as funding and acknowledgement of our community. With that, we'll move on to item B. Receive update on COVID-19 response efforts, City Manager.
Good afternoon, members of the city council and the public. My name is Javon Grogan. I am the city manager and I will provide us with a brief update on COVID-19. So I believe the PowerPoint is up. So our agenda today is a brief update on countywide stats and positive cases in the city of San Bruno. Next, we want to talk about the replacement of our local shelter-in-place order with the statewide order. And we will talk a little bit about a word of caution from our local county health officer, as well as talk about the resumption of street and parking enforcement. So the slide that is before you, those of you that have seen these presentations, it will be familiar. It is directly from the county health department's website. What it shows is, as of the last time the data was updated, there were, there are 2,901 total positive cases in the county. That is a 5% positivity rate on the number of tests that are being conducted. And the community and the council may remember that early on, the positivity rate was approximately 10%. There are, have been a total of 104 deaths. This is updated from 93 deaths the last time I gave the community an update, which was two weeks ago at our prior council meeting on June 29th. On June 9th. Countywide stats, just showing this slide once again. This is data by city, and so we know that there are 125 positive cases in the city of San Bruno. But the shading on this map shows us that our positivity rate and number is lower than our surrounding cities of both Millbrae and South San Francisco. And that has been a trend that is continuing. A little bit quickly about the shelter-in-place order. I think we all know that effective June 17th, the county of San Mateo's order was rescinded and replaced with the state order. And there's a link here to the state resiliency roadmap. And the statewide order currently limits gatherings to no more than 50 people. It requires all businesses to implement social distancing protocol and health and safety plans, reopens all businesses, but still encourages employees that can work from home to continue working from home. Allow social bubbles. Social bubbles are generally defined as social gatherings of 12 or fewer people. And that group should agree to be in that social bubble for at least three weeks. And so if you're having a gathering at your house, 12 or fewer people, and remain in that bubble for three weeks. And so don't have multiple parties with multiple groups of 12. And social distancing and face coverings when out in public remains in effect. A few other things for a list of the allowable businesses. There are dining restaurants, hair salons and barber shops are now open. I know that was a question of council. Casinos, family entertainment centers, restaurants, wineries, bars, zoos, gyms, fitness centers, hotels for tourism and individual travel, card rooms and racetracks, campgrounds and outdoor recreation. And nail salons, body waxing, tattoo parlors were all allowed to resume effective June 19th. And so a word of caution from our health officer is up, and I will read that. Our county health officer, Scott Morrow, said, "We are moving away from opening businesses. We are moving away from opening businesses according to certain categories and instead focusing on behaviors and practices. As we ease these restrictions, the power to control the spread of the virus lies with individuals and communities. Collective behavior will determine our destiny. Even though people, businesses and organizations in the community do not follow protective recommendations, the virus may spread." If enough people in businesses or organizations in the community do not follow protective recommendations, the virus may spread. Okay, so next, street sweeping and parking enforcement, something that the city council has asked about and the public has asked about. And we have pushed this out on social media. And parking enforcement and street sweeping enforcement will resume on July 6th. And so everyone should be mindful of that. We did suspend parking and street sweeping enforcement early on in the shelter-in-place. And now with businesses opening and more people about in the community, we feel that it's appropriate for people to move their cars during normal street sweeping days and to begin enforcement of those regulations. And so that will begin. Again, stay connected on all of our various social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. We have the city's coronavirus website, our normal city web address, www.sanbruno.ca.gov/coronavirus. You can find press releases, statements and all of these PowerPoints that contains links to all of the information that we have shared every two weeks beginning since the shelter-in-place took effect. With that, open for questions from the city council, if there are any.
There any questions? Marty, Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you. For the 72-hour parking enforcement, is that restarting again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
City manager, and then go to Laura. Just very quick, one of our speakers asked about what the stance is in regards to wearing face coverings, masks.
Individuals in the state of California, everywhere in the state of California, per the governor's order, should wear a mask when they are out in public and stay approximately six feet away.
And that's for the entire state of California, not just San Bruno, not just the county?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
And then just to piggyback on that question, what about exercising? Because I guess that's the conflict, right? So if you're out running around, you don't need to, you have the option to not wear it.
It is encouraged, but not required. Early on, the requirements were lifted, so if you were out exercising, very broadly defined, even walking could be considered exercise. And you have the option of not wearing a face mask when exercising. But the governor's order says that when out in public, everyone must wear a face mask. There is the exemption for exercising, which makes it hard to enforce and issue, for example, citations for people not wearing a face mask because one can say, "Well, I was exercising and walking." And so there are challenges to logistical enforcement, which is why our local county health officer and just about everyone is saying our collective actions will really dictate our collective safety. And so we're asking everybody to abide by the rules as much as possible. But you are right, there is that exemption for exercising.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? And again, the face mask at this time is required by the state order. So it's not a, if I feel like it, it is required. Other than the exercising, correct, City Manager?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item C. Receive annual oral report from the San Bruno Community Foundation.
I brought over Leslie Hadamia from the Community Foundation. Leslie, do you need me to bring over Chair Roberts?
No, I think she, I'll be handling the whole presentation.
Okay.
Will you be sharing my slides or should I be doing that?
If you have them ready, you can.
Okay. Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Leslie Hadamia, and for the past five and a half years, I've had the privilege of being the executive director of the San Bruno Community Foundation. Thank you for this opportunity this evening to share with the council the foundation's highlights over the past year. Once again, we've been very busy administering a broad array of programs that benefit the San Bruno community, utilizing the restitution funds resulting from the tragic 2010 gas pipeline explosion. As we approach the 10th anniversary of the explosion, it's helpful to reflect on the origins of the funds the foundation administers and the circumstances in which we find ourselves today. The foundation was born out of disaster and tragedy, and it is important and appropriate that the foundation step up and support our community in this current time of disaster and tragedy. The foundation has dedicated a half million dollars to COVID-19 relief efforts in our local community. And at last, and at our last board meeting earlier this month, President Emily Roberts articulated the foundation's outrage over the senseless killing of George Floyd and the many other people of color whose lives have been taken or harmed by systemic injustice and abuse of power. She also acknowledged the platform and privilege the foundation holds in our diverse community. We are hopeful that the renewed focus on the persistence of systemic racism will lead to desperately needed progress, and we pledge to find meaningful ways to better support this healing. So let me begin my recap of the foundation's past year by highlighting the COVID-19 relief initiatives the foundation spearheaded this spring, totaling an investment of $500,000. San Bruno, as you all know, is the city with a heart, and as we saw with the gas pipeline explosion 10 years ago, this community is resilient and strong. The Community Foundation is in a fortunate position of being able to provide assistance to important segments of our community that are in need. When we looked to see how we could truly make a meaningful impact, two areas that affect so many in our community stood out, our schools and our small businesses. In developing this package of grants, we were led by the guiding principles that our board articulated five years ago when we first created our program strategy. In particular, the foundation's ability to respond quickly and flexibly to address the critical needs of the community in partnership with key community stakeholders is critical in the face of a global pandemic that has brought tremendous hardship and uncertainty to our current circumstance. So with regard to the schools, the first COVID relief program we supported was back in April, when the city and the San Bruno Education Foundation approached us about a joint effort to provide free internet access through San Bruno City Net Services to low-income San Bruno students. The foundation contributed $10,000 to this effort, joining the city, the Rotary Club and the Police Association in underwriting the costs of this program. The second program serving our public schools is the Teacher Laptop Initiative. When I first reached out to the San Bruno Park School District's interim superintendent and asked her to identify the district's highest priority need that the foundation could help with right now, she quickly said new laptops for all of the district's teachers to support them in this new era of distance learning. She said that when the district first was confronted with distance learning, it focused on the students, making sure that they had devices at home and internet access. What the district quickly discovered, however, was that many of the teachers were lacking the necessary technology to support the sudden and dramatic transition to online instruction that they were being asked to bank. Our $240,000 grant to the San Bruno Education Foundation ensures that every district teacher from preschool to grade eight, as well as some support staff, will receive a new work MacBook. And then there's small businesses that we're helping. The foundation is taking a two-pronged approach in assisting San Bruno's lively and eclectic small business community as they attempt to survive the disastrous impacts of COVID-19. For the first prong, the foundation provided a $150,000 grant to the San Mateo County Strong Small Business Grant Program. Our grant is enabling 15 small businesses in San Bruno to receive $10,000 grants to help them stay afloat during this time. The second prong of our approach is to fund a program run through the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center of Skyline College to provide free technical, business and financial assistance to San Bruno small businesses in need. This $100,000 grant is leveraging the Entrepreneur Center's partnerships with the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce, Skyline College's accounting department, the Renaissance Center, SCORE and the Small Business Development Center. The Small Business Recovery and Assistance Program is currently recruiting participants, so if you know of any local businesses that could use this assistance, please refer them to Bayek and Said Astrad. We are hopeful that these four COVID relief initiatives will make a meaningful difference in San Bruno. In addition to the COVID relief grants, let me say that I have been personally privileged and honored to serve as a member of the city's EOC team these past few months at the invitation of City Manager Javon Grogan. I have viewed firsthand the dedication of the city's senior leadership and EOC team in dealing with the constantly changing landscape due to COVID-19. The foundation and I are grateful for the opportunity to partner with the city to provide volunteer coordination as well as resources for small businesses, nonprofits and community members in need. So let me also briefly mention some of the other strategic grants this foundation has provided this past year. Of course, the most notable is the design and construction of the city's new Recreation and Aquatic Center, to which the foundation has committed $50 million. The decision to fund this project came after a thorough and thoughtful process the city conducted that included considerable community engagement and has had broad community support. As you know, we are funding the project with a series of individual grants covering different components of the project. Thus far, we have approved four grants totaling about $8 million, covering conceptual design, architectural services, project and construction management, and most recently, a package of city compliance review expenses. We look forward to the next steps in this process, securing temporary facilities, developing the business and operation plan, and most notably, hiring the contractor and breaking ground on this much-needed community resource with the commencement of the construction phase early next year. Another key partnership with the city has been the First Responder Effectiveness Strategic Initiative. As you may recall, the first part of this initiative was a set of three projects aimed at enhancing the effectiveness of San Bruno's first responders. Police mindfulness training, emergency shelter supplies and critical facilities site assessments, action plans and training. Then, after the April 2018 shooting at YouTube's headquarters, Google.org and employees of both Google and YouTube contributed more than $300,000 to our first responder efforts. And last year, the foundation approved a grant to cover the acquisition and construction of a mobile command vehicle for the city using these funds. The city is waiting to receive the vehicle as built-to-city specifications, and we look forward to the city being able to use this valuable first responder resource in our community. One final strategic grant I want to mention is the Music Education Strategic Initiative. This was originally envisioned as a three-year, half-million-dollar investment to make music education a hallmark of San Bruno's public schools. Due to the challenges facing the San Bruno Park School District with its current leadership transition, as well as a challenging fundraising environment created by COVID-19 and other recent circumstances, the foundation extended the initiative to a fourth year, giving another $60,000 to the San Bruno Education Foundation and $8,000 to the Cappuccino High School Alumni Association to ensure that this initiative continues and that the schools and supporting organizations will be able to sustain the programs after foundation funding sentence. In addition to our strategic grant-making, we also run two in-house programs. The first is the Community Grants Fund, which allows local community groups to apply for grant funding of up to $25,000 for programs that benefit the San Bruno community. At the end of 2019, we awarded our fourth set of community grants, which totaled $300,000, thanks in part to a generous $100,000 donation from YouTube and Google.org. The 29 grants went to a diverse set of community groups, as you can see from the slide, from Cora to Rape Trauma Services, to the Society of West Coast Artists, to the San Bruno 4-H Club. The city received one community grant this year for the Narita Sister City Exchange Program. And since the exchange wasn't able to take place this year due to COVID-19, we've extended the grant period and the city will be able to use the grant in 2021 when we hope the exchange will be able to resume. We will launch our fifth Community Grants Fund cycle at the beginning of July with an application deadline of September 30th. I'm happy to let you know that YouTube and Google.org are again contributing $100,000 to this program. And so with $200,000 of our own funds, the foundation will award another $300,000 in community grants in December. Our final program is the Kressmer Neighborhood Memorial Scholarship, which we launched in 2016 to honor the community members most directly affected by the 2010 gas pipeline explosion. This scholarship assists San Bruno students who have demonstrated a deep commitment to the San Bruno community with the cost of attending college. Earlier this month, we awarded our fifth set of college scholarships totaling $190,000 to 13 impressive high school and community college students. We are especially grateful this year to the Welch family and the Joseph W. Welch Jr. Foundation for its generous $70,000 donation to the program. We also thank all of those who were able to attend our scholarship presentation, which was still heartfelt even on Zoom and not in person. And we're especially grateful to Mayor Medina for congratulating the Kressmer Scholars on behalf of the city. These impressive young people are inspiring, and especially at this point in time, they give us great hope for the future. In accordance with their bylaws, the council's consent calendar this evening includes the foundation's fiscal year 2021 budget, which the foundation board approved on June 3rd. A few words about the budget. The expenses include nearly $43 million in direct program disbursements, including $42 million for the remaining Recreation and Aquatic Center grants, including the construction grant, and about $250,000 available for additional COVID relief, racial justice or other strategic grants, with the balance for scholarships, community grants and, we hope, Community Day 2021. We also estimate about $40,000 in support costs. From the beginning, we've been extremely conscious to keep our administrative expenses low. We are very leanly staffed. I've been the only employee for five and a half years, supported mainly by two very part-time employees, or I'm sorry, part-time consultants, an accountant who does our books and a program manager who helps with the Community Grants Fund and the Kressmer Scholarship. This year, we are having to convert our program manager from consultant status to employee status as required by AB 5, the Gig Work Bill that was enacted by the state of California last fall. The increase in our staff salary line that you may have noticed in the budget is primarily the result of this reclassification from consultant to employee. We do not show investment income for our investment accounts in our budget. The board designates the payout or amount to transfer from our investment accounts to cover the year's cash flow needs. Thus, what the budget shows are the funds actually available for operations. It shows that we are taking a 1.7% payout from the quasi-endowment, or just under $300,000, with the balance needed to cover our cash needs for the year of about $16 million. And that's mainly going to grant payments for the Recreation Aquatic Center, coming from our strategic pool and the part of our liquidity pool earmarked for the Rec Center. Our budget also does not reflect the totality of our investment holdings, but I'd like you to know that even with the market volatility we've experienced as a result of the pandemic over the past couple of months, as of May 31st, 2020, our total assets exceeded $74.7 million. And I checked our account balances earlier today, and total right now is above $75 million. We respectfully ask the city council to approve the foundation's fiscal year 2021 budget. This action will allow the foundation to continue moving forward on its current trajectory to use the restitution funds to enhance the quality of life for all of us in San Bruno. Before I close, I'd like to acknowledge by name our current board members who have been key to the foundation's success. President Emily Roberts, Vice President Jim Ruane, Secretary John McLaughlin, Treasurer Tim Ross and board members Raul Gomez, Nancy Kraus and Melissa Nataini Jones. I'd also like to thank the key city staff members who have supported us tremendously over the past year. In particular, City Manager Javon Grogan, City Attorney Mark Safrano, former Community Services Director Joanne McGreeney, Finance Director Keith DiMartini, Community and Economic Development Director Darcy Smith, Assistant to the City Manager Jennifer Dianos and the City Clerk's Office. During the shelter-in-place, we are especially grateful to the assistance of City Clerk Melissa Thurman and IT staffer Paul Vella in helping us run our meetings on Zoom. So that's the foundation over the past 12 months. I hope you'll agree that we have had another busy and productive year in service to our community. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation and report. Are there any comments or questions from council at this time? If seeing none, thank you again, Leslie. I'm sure you'll be standing by for under consent.
I think you might have had one.
All right, hold on, I just, some hands went up. First, Councilmember Davis and then Councilmember Mason.
Leslie, thank you for an excellent presentation. I really appreciate that. I'm sure a lot of residents don't really understand how much work that goes into this foundation. $70 million originally was handed over to the foundation to invest and to give back to our community. And what a great thing that we continue to do. And balances today of well over another additional $5 million. So just in, and you don't have to be exact, but could you give me a ballpark about how much money has actually been in total given back to our community?
Ooh, I don't have that number off the top of my head, and I can calculate that and get back to you with that.
No worries.
But you know, we've had our expenses paid over the past five years, as well as we've probably given out in grants several million dollars. We've been giving $120,000 to $190,000 in scholarships each year. We've been giving $300,000 in community grants each year. The first year, we gave $200,000, and since then, it's been $300,000. So it's been probably another, just ballpark figures, it's several more million that we dispersed or spent in operating expenses. Plus, we're now at about $75 million total.
Councilmember Mason.
Hi.
What's that?
Is this the time to ask questions on the resolution or is it, or should I wait till consent calendar?
That should be wait to under consent if it's dealing with the budget. Yes, this is questions or comments in regards to the presentation.
Okay, so then just for the presentation, just thank you, Leslie, and to the board. And I appreciate that you thanked Melissa and Javon and Mark. I was on one of the recent calls, and I know that they're giving additional time to the Community Foundation, which I think is great. So thank you for all your work this year.
You're welcome, thank you.
Seeing no more hands up from council, we'll move on to the next item under presentations. Item D. Receive presentation from the fire and police chiefs regarding the city's requirements for the use of safe and sane fireworks in San Bruno and San Bruno's zero tolerance policy. We'll first turn it over to Chief Johansson.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Ryan Johansson. I am your chief of police, and I'm going to give a brief presentation on our preparations and what we're doing for the 4th of July fireworks enforcement and other details for 2020. I will also be joined by Fire Chief Ari Delay, but we've only got a few slides, so I'll give the presentation itself and Chief Delay will be available for any. give the presentation itself, and Chief Delay will be available for any questions or comments that relate specifically to the fire operations. So I know we have a lot on the agenda. I'll try to dig right in here. First, covering some of the preparations that we've made for Fourth of July this year. First of all, you know, all department personnel are ordered to work the Fourth of July. This has been consistent with the last several years, where we cancel all vacation requests and all time off, and all staff are required to work on the Fourth of July. Many are working patrol assignments that are part of their normal duties, but everyone who is not already working the Fourth will be doing so in a special detail enforcement capacity. We've already completed the incident action plan for this year. This is a fairly robust process that involves integration with fire in order to determine how we will deploy our assets in advance of the Fourth of July, which incorporates all of our social media outreach and public information campaign, in addition to our actual enforcement activities and our education activities in the days leading up to the Fourth. We'll talk a little bit more specifically about that as we move on here. We have or are in the process of finalizing a joint fire and police public safety announcement, which will air not only on Channel 1, but which will be broadcasted via social media and our other different channels that enable us public outreach. This will basically be an education piece that not only informs the community about the different laws relating to the use of safe and sane fireworks and the prohibited use of illegal fireworks, but kind of gives them some insight as to how to tell the difference between the two and what to expect in terms of consequences and ramifications in the event that they are caught using illegal fireworks or improperly using safe and sane fireworks. So that should be forthcoming fairly soon, in the next couple of days. We've also already conducted our mandatory safety meeting. This is joint between police and fire and is conducted with all booth operators, so all of the different nonprofits that will be selling fireworks at booths. Their staff are required to go through a mandatory safety meeting where we discuss all the ins and outs of safely operating the booth, setting up the booth, not only from the obvious fire safety perspective, because when you've got all of these fireworks on site, that is a major concern, but also just from a general public safety perspective. We give them some insight as to what to look out for around the booths in order to avoid counterfeit bill usage, credit card fraud, theft, and some of the other things that can come along with, with running these booths. So that has already been completed. We will be working with fire to issue informational warning notices at all city facilities, so that anytime someone is conducting business with the city, this is sort of front and center for them, and they'll be able to, to see kind of what our enforcement policy and posture will be for the year. Continuing through this, every year, the police department makes contact at known violation locations in an effort to sort of preempt some of the activity that we don't want to see. So we've been doing this for a number of years now. We have some recurring locations that tend to be problem locations year after year, and we try to reach out to those locations ahead of time and remind them of the consequences, and hopefully just gain some general compliance from them ahead of time. This has been fairly effective with some locations and not so much, as I'm sure residents can attest with others, that unfortunately create headaches for them year after year. But it still is something that we do every single year to get out ahead of time and, and try to head off these problems before they start. Something kind of new this year is as we're learning to use our data sources more effectively, we now have been using our current CAD RMS system since 2014, which means we have a lot of data. And this has enabled us to structure some of our enforcement activities a little bit differently this year, where we are generating essentially heat maps that show where our biggest concentration of calls for service, citations, and unruly gathering complaints come from, and we can target our enforcement efforts and put more resources in the areas where we tend to have more problems. And so hopefully, this will enable us to be a little bit more effective this year than we have in years past by taking a little bit more of a data-driven approach to how we allocate our limited resources on the Fourth and in advance of the Fourth as well. Fire will have an extra engine company on duty for response every year inevitably. I know that fire is very busy with the, the added calls that come with the Fourth of July celebration, be it brush fires, house fires, smoke investigations, the whole litany of things that they have to deal with on the Fourth, in addition to supporting police's efforts for enforcement, and so they bring on an entire extra engine company to facilitate that. All fire prevention staff will also be on duty, taking a more proactive approach to heading off some, some of the problem areas ahead of time and kind of canvassing those areas to try to keep fireworks away from the spots where we know that fires can start quickly and easily. So use of safe and sane fireworks. This is an issue that obviously the city of San Bruno allows the use and sale of safe and sane fireworks. Like to just take a couple of bullet points here to touch on what those are and how to tell the difference. You'll see the seal here that appears on the right side of your screen. This is the state fire marshal's seal that designates a firework as safe and sane. Believe it or not, every year, be it truthful or not, we have several individuals who end up receiving $1,000 administrative citations for using illegal fireworks, and they claim that, you know, they bought them at what they thought was a reputable place, and they didn't know they were illegal. So it's good to inform the public that if this seal does not appear on a firework, it is probably illegal, and you can be cited for possessing and/or using it within our city limits. So this is the seal that you always want to be looking for. In more general terms, essentially, if it flies in the air or it explodes, it is illegal. So we do have some fountains and things like that that will emit sparks into the air, but if it shoots a projectile or it creates an explosion, it is probably illegal and should not be used. Use of these fireworks is permitted starting on the 28th of June from noon to 9:00 PM, and then on the Fourth, those hours expand a little bit from noon until 11:00 PM. So sometimes we get calls in because people say, oh, the fireworks are being used today. It's not the Fourth of July yet. The municipal code does actually allow for them to be used, starting on the 28th at noon and running through to 11:00 PM on the Fourth of July with some hours in the evening where they're not permitted. Use on private property only, and they must be at least 10 feet away from structures. So there is no use permitted in parks and public parking lots, technically not even allowed on city streets, although this is something that we all know is fairly commonplace. Our enforcement posture has been to really try to focus on enforcing the use of illegal fireworks as opposed to the low-level misuse of safe and sane. The feeling is that for a lot of folks to get 10 feet away from a structure, which is the most important component of using safe and sane, the street or the end of the driveway ends up being a fairly safe alternative. So generally speaking, as long as folks are respectful of traffic traveling on the streets, we do not proactively enforce the use of safe and sane fireworks in a safe manner on city streets as long as they are, again, not creating other issues or obstructions. Again, not permitted at all in any of our parks, any public parking lots, any schools, or any open space areas. And we do canvass those pretty thoroughly on the Fourth of July, and will remove folks from those areas if they're even using safe and sane fireworks. Please remember that misuse of safe and sane fireworks is dangerous and illegal. We have numerous occurrences of this almost every year, where folks are cutting open fireworks and concentrating them, or they're throwing them or misusing them in ways that make them dangerous, and it is illegal to do so, and you can be cited for that as well. And now we'll talk briefly about illegal fireworks enforcement. So again, all PD staff will be working the Fourth of July, really with the sole aim of canvassing the town and ensuring that as much enforcement of illegal fireworks use as possible is being conducted. We will have marked units, unmarked units, uniformed officers, plainclothes officers, bicycle units, motorcycle units, and we will be utilizing surveillance teams. Surveillance teams is something that I added into the operations plan last year. It proved to be very effective. This essentially has undercover units conducting surveillance only, not making themselves ever known or seen to the public, and directing in uniformed police to issue citations and conduct enforcement activities. There have even been cases where those units in situations where it's difficult to identify the specific offender will utilize video surveillance in order to capture exactly who is conducting the illegal activities, and citations can be issued after the fact. It is a $1,000 administrative citation for use and/or possession of illegal fireworks. There is not a accelerating scale where it starts at 50, or you get a warning. Our enforcement posture has been zero tolerance from the standpoint that if we have what it takes in order to issue a citation, which means that we have directly and personally observed someone possessing and/or using illegal fireworks, we will issue the $1,000 administrative citation per San Bruno Muni Code. That's where it starts, and that's essentially where it ends. We did last year implement the social host component of citations. This means that if you are hosting a gathering or a party where illegal fireworks are being used, you can be cited whether you are the person who is lighting, possessing, or using them or not. We did use this on multiple occasions last year. We will not hesitate to use it again this year when appropriate in order to stop the use of illegal fireworks, because that use is dangerous and also hampers the other celebrators that are trying to enjoy the Fourth legally and lawfully. So please be on notice that if you are the one hosting a party, you're the homeowner, you're the renter, or you're the person in control of a gathering, we can and will issue you a citation if there are illegal fireworks being used at your party. When it comes to reporting violations, this is a little bit of a departure in a favor that we are asking from the police department and the public this year. In going through the data that I spoke about earlier, we are now able to kind of analyze and see where we are most effective in conducting actual enforcement that results in arrests and citations being issued. And that enforcement is tending to stem from our proactive activities as opposed to vague calls for service from the public. As an example, if you know that fireworks are going off in a general city block or in a general area, or even associated with a general residence, but you do not have an actual suspect description for us to work with, calling that in really doesn't do us a tremendous amount of good. We're committed to responding to all the calls for service, so as we get those, we have to take officers who might be working in active area on foot where they have seen them going off, and we have to kind of work our way in to get close enough to make the observations we need to issue a citation. And they often have to go back to their vehicle and leave in order to go field a complaint that is vague, right? We all know that the fireworks illegals are going off all over the community, unfortunately. And so a call that says, hey, on the 300 blocks of such and such street, there's illegal fireworks going off, is not of tremendous help to us. That being said, when you have very specific observations where you see a specific person that you can describe to us by clothing and other physical descriptions, that is helpful to call those in, and we can act upon those. But bear in mind that the officer, in order to issue a citation for this violation, must directly and personally observe the violation. It is not enough for a member of the public to tell us that they saw it. This is essentially a misdemeanor that is written in the Muni Code, and for us to conduct enforcement lawfully, we have to observe the violation directly. So again, please do make calls in when you have specific information. When you do not, please resist the urge to call in the vague information, because it really truthfully is a distraction from the activities that tend to result in actual enforcement. So with that, that ends my presentation, and I know myself and Chief Delay are happy to field any questions or comments that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for your report. Obviously, you are correct, and I know if all of us are watching the news, it's happening in many communities to a higher degree, whether it's because of COVID or et cetera. To our neighbors nearby to the south and to the north, we know that they're also experiencing illegal fireworks. Our safe and sane, as you indicated, goes on sale on the 28th. I have got a lot of emails, and it's not just to one area. It's throughout various parts of the community that they're experiencing that type of stuff. So can you update us on what you've heard, what you know as far as the illegals that are going off, or if there's a higher volume that you're aware of? I know every community is facing that, and I've heard it.
Yes, I mean, I can certainly say that for this time of year, being this far before the Fourth, we have seen an increase this year in reports from the community about illegal fireworks usage. I have no doubt that's because there, there's an increase in usage and also an increase in reporting with folks being at home and experiencing it more regularly. We're being as responsive as we can, I can assure you that. And I want you to know, we definitely take this as a priority. We have for years, and we sort of put our money where our mouth is in terms of the calling in of all staff, and this doesn't just happen on the Fourth, right? For the next several days, starting, in fact, tomorrow, we'll be having proactive overtime enforcement daily. These are units that come in just to handle the fireworks calls for service and to try to be proactive about heading off some of these problems. But to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, I'd say yes, we've already seen an increase this year over previous years in calls for service.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Council member Mason? You're on mute. You're on mute, Linda.
Thank you. So thanks for the work. I know this is a crazy season for you guys. I did have a question. I know on our block, we do the safe and sane fireworks. It's very enjoyable for all the families in the block. We all pretty much come out, everyone contributes. One of the issues that comes up every year is the speeding on the streets. Is there anything that, that we can do legally? Can we put barricades up? Can we do anything on Fourth of July to make sure that literally they're done in the middle of the street to keep all the kids safe? Is there anything that can be done to, I guess, alleviate that situation?
So I know that if you want to actually put up barricades that would effectively restrict vehicular traffic, you're going to need to pursue a permit from the city.
Yeah.
Beyond that, however, we have seen these, these signs that are like the little reflective images of like the shape of children that say, you know, slow down, there's kids. They actually work quite well, has been our experience. So we would encourage that. And then by all means, that's something we, if you're seeing that occurring down there, that is really, really dangerous on the Fourth of July, where you've got smoke and fire. I mean, and we've got regulations on how fast we can drive even to emergency calls. So if you're seeing that in your area, please do call that in. We can go down, we've got these motor units, they're happy to go down there and conduct some radar enforcement and kind of hang out, try to get folks to slow down. That's a big deal.
Yeah, and the parents are keeping an eye, so we're, we're very vigilant, but it is a really nice community event. I just wish the illegal fireworks would stop. I think we all do. Thank you.
You and me both, ma'am.
Council member Davis? You're on mute.
Oh, you know what? I was on mute, and then I muted us. Can a resident videotape somebody lighting off illegal fireworks? And can that be used as evidence?
So the short answer is yes. If it's, if the video is occurring in a public place, you have a right to videotape it, and we can use that as evidence. Where things get a little bit dicey here is that, again, this is essentially a misdemeanor written into Muni Code that gets enforced as an administrative violation. And because it gets enforced as an administrative violation, we need direct observation by the officer in order to issue that citation. There, it doesn't mean that we can't sort of request it on the back end based on the evidence provided by a resident, but that's typically going to require us to submit to the court on what would be a 12677 Health and Safety Code violation as opposed to the administrative violation. And the reason we moved away from this years ago, and the reason that, that council was, had the foresight to get this Muni Code written, is because the penalties for those are nothing. Folks were going to court and paying $25 and getting the case dismissed and walking, and so it was having no teeth and stopping the activity. So I think we really want to stick with the Muni, with the administrative violation, which does require the direct observation by the officer. But if we've got a real problem occurring and we're just not able to get what we need to enforce it, and you shoot video, I would say definitely let the PD know about that, and we can consider that other course of action through the Health and Safety Code.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, I think all of us are experiencing it, but it's the animals that I feel so bad with. I mean, there's, you just can't handle it. It's really, really hard. So for those of you, if you're listening, you're out there lighting off illegal fireworks, please stop. Thanks so much.
Council member Medina?
Yes, thank you. This is actually a question for our city attorney. I'm just passing along a question from some, a couple people contacting me about why we couldn't increase the citations as a, an additional reason for people to not, to not light off the legal ones. And he did provide a response, and I was wondering, Mark, if you could please explain it in your, your legal ways much better than I could.
City attorney?
Of course, Council member Medina. So there are a couple of answers. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I guess I shouldn't speak into my computer. There are a couple of answers to the question. The first answer is that the $1,000 was selected because it is the highest possible fine for violations that, that, that are misdemeanors. And so therefore, the administrative fine, the city council was advised to not set it above that amount, because otherwise you might run into a, a problem where the court might not enforce it. And the, the second part of that answer is that while in theory, there might be support in state law for raising that administrative fine amount above the $1,000, even if you wanted to ignore the misdemeanor fine amount, the, the policy concern is that increasing the fine amount actually doesn't necessarily deter people from committing the crime. What it does is incentivize people to challenge the citation. So the, the higher the fine, the more incentive people have to, to challenge it, and hence the more resources the city spends to, to defend that, that particular fine. So it's just finding that the right sweet spot from an enforcement standpoint, and I don't know that we have any evidence that increasing the fine would, would create a problem, or would, would create that incentive. And then, sorry, the, the last thing is that, you know, some cities have, do have very high administrative fines for certain kinds of code violations, and the theory is that, well, let's just charge as much as we possibly can, and, you know, until somebody complains about it. And, you know, generally, we, we don't follow that philosophy in San Bruno. We try to find what seems to be the, the right amount for deterring the violation, but that also we, we don't have a tremendous number of, of challenges.
Thank you. And, and city attorney, and maybe I had And, and city attorney and maybe, I had heard at one point when we did increase it from 500 to 1,000, that it was, that's the maximum the state allowed under this. And so therefore, to an increase of beyond 1,000 for this particular incident, it would have to come from state? Or am I incorrect on that?
Well, the, the answer is complicated. There is a state law that does address this. It doesn't exactly say that, but the implication of that law is exactly what you said, Mr. Mayor. And so in, out of an abundance of caution and not wishing to attract undue attention from potential litigants, I think the city council prudently decided to set the amount at sort of the maximum for what, what those fines are set at in the criminal, in the criminal law.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Salazar?
I wanted to thank both of the chiefs for the work they put into the, the presentation and preparing for this season and ask that you please pass along my thanks to, to all the troops out there that are going to be putting in the extra time and spending time away from their families. Couple of years ago, I didn't get to do it last year, but two years ago, I went on a ride along and saw how frustrating it is to, you get the calls and you go running off to try to find where it's happening. And by the time you get there, it's over. You see some more going off a few blocks away and you chase those down and they're gone. So I, I definitely see where getting the detailed information is going to be important. And I think, you know, people's first reaction when they, when they hear these things going off and especially in a large volume is to pick up the phone and call the police. And I saw firsthand how, how ineffective that is. So I, I think that's a, a good campaign and the more that you can do to get that information out, I think it definitely helps. Also, you, you mentioned the proactive work that the department does. There's like, I guess, people that, that are known offenders that you'll visit ahead of time and basically let them know that enforcement will be in place. I'm just wondering that if over, over the period of time where that's been happening, has it proven to be effective in getting people to, to stop the behavior? And are we seeing new offenders show up every year? Or are we still seeing repeat offenders basically still breaking the law year after year?
Yeah, I would say that both are true. It's been very effective with, with some and completely ineffective with some others that are, that are probably the residences that, that we're all aware of that, that just every year are kind of a problem for us. And then, you know, the folks get a little more sophisticated too. And now it's, you know, moving down the street from your party to set off the illegal fireworks and, and running from there so that we're, we're chasing our tail even a little bit more. But I do think with, there have been a lot of reasonable residents in town that when you meet with them ahead of time and just say, look, we, we really, you've got to help us stop this or we're going to lose this really kind of cool thing that this city has to celebrate this holiday together. We've had a lot of good, reasonable responses.
Thank you. And I, there is, city clerk is letting me know we have a member of the community that wanted to speak. But just as, and I don't think it was referenced, a lot of folks I know are emailing, why do we allow safe and sane? And just as a history, it was 2005 that it went to the ballot in November that asked, shall it continue, the safe and sane fireworks in the city of San Bruno? It was 65% at that time that, 65 point something at that time, for those that voted, that did approve it. Therefore, the city council cannot stop it or ban it. That has to come from a vote of the people at an election. City clerk, you had, somebody put their hand up from the community?
Yes, Josh Goldberg. Just one moment, Josh, while I bring you in the room and unmute. Hi, guys. Can you hear us?
Yes, hi. Thank you very much for the presentation. I used to live in Santa Cruz. I've seen some pretty devastating fires and injuries from illegal fireworks. So I'm, I'm glad that you're doing this enforcement program. One question I have is around your use of data services. There's a lot of implicit bias in these systems and confirmation bias where hotspots that show up end up getting more patrols and then more crime is, is found there as a result. And it kind of feeds on itself. I just want to make sure, or ask, I guess, what are you doing to mitigate these issues with these new services that are being made available? I'm a software engineer. I know these problems because I've made some in the past. So I'm very familiar with the problem and want to make sure that it's, it's not being misunderstood or ignored here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chief, is there, or either chief, is there anything that you can respond as far as technologies and utilizing? I know there's, you know, the shot spotter or other things sometimes people will bring up.
Yeah, so we're, we're conscientious of the limitations of the data we're using. And just to be clear, we haven't employed some sort of new crime mapping software. All we're doing is pulling up our own crime data and analyzing it to sort of direct patrols a little bit more effectively. It does not mean that we'll be abandoning one neighborhood in order to conduct enforcement in another. It just has to do with how we deploy some of the resources. For example, if we have an area where over this, you know, six-year timeline that we've been tracking calls and our current CAD RMS system shows that we have a much more significant level of complaint of illegal fireworks, we may choose to put a bicycle unit concentrated down there as opposed to moving it to another side of town where the complaints are lower or where the citations that have resulted are lower. So certainly I'm sensitive to, to the comment, which is, you know, suggests that if we're enforcing in one area more than in others, then it looks like it needs more enforcement in that area and that can create some sort of bias in how we, how we deploy our resources. But I think this is very, very specific to fireworks complaints as opposed to overall arrests or patrolling resources. So I think that the use of data is appropriate.
Okay, thank you again to both. And as Vice Mayor said, we know it's, it's extra time and effort, but we appreciate you folks doing that for the community. Please pass it on to your teams.